Yesterday, a legal settlement between the two sides brought some clarifications. Teachers and students can in fact discuss LGBTQ issues so long as it's not part of the classroom instruction. One of the groups bringing the lawsuit was Equality Florida, and the group's senior policy advisor, Carlos Guillermo Smith, joins us now. Welcome, Carlos.
Thank you for having me. It's a huge victory.
Before the settlement, what was the practical effect of the ban on what teachers and students could say or not say?
Well, unfortunately, the practical effect is that it had created an environment of fear and intimidation in our public schools, not just because of the fact that the Don't Say Gay or Trans law was so intentionally vague. It's also because the law was very punitive. Teachers could not only lose their jobs if they were found in violation of the Don't Say Gay or Trans law, they could have their teacher's license suspended, which is a promise of professional ruin. So at the end of the day, you saw a lot of self censorship, the pulling back of any discussion, or really a validation of LGBT people existing in our classrooms. We saw the removal of library books that included LGBT people and an exodus of teachers from the profession, both gay and straight. So now, the state has been forced to detail in writing the freedom of LGBT students and educators to live and speak openly in our schools.
And let me ask you about that, Carlos. Now that we have the settlement clarifying the law, does it allow, say, teachers to speak about same-sex partners? Does it allow, say, rainbow stickers or anti-bullying rules to protect LGBTQ students?
Sure. It allows students and teachers to now speak and write freely about sexual orientation and gender identity in classroom participation and in assignments. To your point about anti-bullying protections, they've actually been strengthened now for LGBT students because the settlement reinforces safeguards against bullying based on sexual orientation and gender identity. These are big takeaways that come as a result of this settlement agreement. So this is a big victory for LGBTQ Floridians, for students, for educators, and for families.
How about books that, for instance, make reference to same-sex couples? Can students read and discuss those in class?
Absolutely. They would be free to discuss them in class, but also, what the settlement says is it clarifies that the Don't Say Gay or Trans law does not apply to library books so long as those books are not being used in the classroom to instruct on topics of sexual orientation and gender identity.
Now that we have the settlement, what is restricted in the classroom as far as classroom instruction?
At the end of the day, the law says that classroom instruction on sexual orientation and gender identity is prohibited. That will virtually have no impact on our schools because no educator was teaching or instructing on sexual orientation or gender identity. That was never a problem in our public schools because it was never happening in our public schools. What did happen is we saw a vague and bigoted law passed and signed by Governor Ron DeSantis that was used to chill speech and to scare teachers away from acknowledging the existence of LGBTQ people entirely. So much of the damage has already been done, but this settlement agreement is a huge step towards repairing some of that damage and being able to move forward so that every student is protected and every family is respected.
Yeah. And briefly, you mentioned the governor, Governor DeSantis. Of course, his perspective was that there was what he calls a woke ideology in schools. He called this settlement "a major win" that, in his view, activists had smeared and exaggerated the reach of the law. Why do you say this is a win for your side?
Well, it's a win because so many of these critical protections that have come from the settlement agreement are ones that we would work to secure under a Democratic governor. These concessions were made by the DeSantis administration so that they could make the Don't Say Gay or Trans lawsuit go away. And let's not get it twisted. The state and the Department of Education weaponized the vagueness of this law to go after teachers who dared even include LGBT people in the classroom. They passed this law to prop Governor DeSantis's presidential campaign up. It failed, and now the law and his agenda is being dismantled piece by piece.
Carlos Guillermo Smith is senior policy advisor at the group Equality Florida. Carlos, thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
At this time, I'd like to invite and welcome Pastor Lavinia Harold, and invite you to come forward to the podium, please, and adjust the mic as you see fit. And if you would, tell us about your church and then lead us in prayer.
Thank you so much. What an honor. Our church is Church Alive International. We're on Peters Creek Road, the corner of Peters Creek and Salem Turnpike. We have been in that facility for about 17 years. Of course, as most churches, we exist to love people, love them back to life, also exist to see revival and awakening in our region. We've been a church for 32 years come this June. It's been our honor, my husband and I, to live in Roanoke County for about 30 of those years. We love this area, and it's my honor to be here to open this session in prayer today.
Okay. Well, after you lead us in prayer, I'll invite anyone who desires to stand for the prayer and to remain standing to join the board in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you thanking you, first of all, for life and for health and for breath. We thank you for what we see happening around us in spring, the beauty of your glory shining everywhere, for you've made everything. Everything has been made by you and intended for your glory, and it's our honor to be here today, gathered for the purposes of government, of good governance. And so, Lord, it is with honor that we look to your word now and pray out your prayers from Isaiah 32, which says, "See, a king will reign in righteousness; rulers will rule with justice; each one will be like a shelter from the wind, a refuge from the storm, like streams of water in the desert, the shadow of a great rock in a thirsty land." Father, bless our leaders now with such wisdom from above that people feel safe, secure, and unafraid to face the future. Give them increased understanding to make right judgment calls concerning our destiny as a county and as a region. May their leadership give us clear vision for the days ahead filled with hope and expectation. We invoke the blessing of Almighty God upon this session today. In the name of Jesus, my Lord, I pray. Amen.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon. Welcome to our meeting from March 12, 2024. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 p.m. Public hearings are held at 7:00 p.m. on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are also broadcast live on RV TV 3, Channel 3, and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 p.m. and on Sunday from 10:00 a.m. until 5:00 p.m. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcanyva.gov. Individuals who require assistance or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk of the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. Item A, Opening Ceremonies. Number one, the roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Present.
Mrs. Hooker?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mrs. Schopper?
Here.
Mr. North?
Here.
Item B, Requests to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests to postpone, add to, or change the order of the agenda, fellow board members?
No, sir.
Mr. Kaywood?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I would request that we remove item C1 from the agenda at the request of John Hall from the Regional Partnership. Mr. Hall is unable to join us today for an unavoidable reason, and we would anticipate rescheduling his presentation at the earliest possible date.
Thank you. Mr. Lubak?
Sir, I have no changes.
Okay. Do any of my fellow board members object to Mr. Kaywood's request?
No, sir.
Seeing none, item C1 is removed from the agenda, and the item previously designated as C2 will now become the new C1. Item C, Briefings. Number one, briefing by staff on Virginia Department of Transportation 419/220 project update. Chair recognizes Megan Cronice, Assistant Director of Planning. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I have a presentation prepared today for projects on Route 220 that the Virginia Department of Transportation is moving forward on. So as an overview, I have a map here, because planners always have maps, showing the corridor from at the north, the Tanglewood Mall area at Route 419, to the south, past the Blue Ridge Parkway and the Clearbrook Walmart, to Indian Grave Road and Clearbrook Village Lane. So you can see the diverging diamond interchange up here in blue, and then the four signals we'll talk about in yellow. The two projects, again, are the diverging diamond interchange at Route 419, and then the signal improvements in all four intersections. So for the Route 419, Route 220 diverging diamond interchange, this project includes constructing a diverging diamond interchange under the existing bridges, which will eliminate the northbound Route 220 ramp. It will also reduce traffic signal phases at three Route 419 intersections at South Peak, Elmview, and Ogden. It will also add bicycle lanes and sidewalk connections. The project funding for this project is $17.5 million, and it's a combination of surface transportation block grant funding and smart-scale funding from Round 3 of that program. This rendering shows what the diverging diamond interchange will look like with pedestrian and bicycle accommodations. This was used at the public hearing. Any questions on the diverging diamond interchange?
So, Megan, will the sidewalk that I see cutting through the middle of that, is that part, will that be installed at the same time?
Yes, sir.
Carlos?
And will connect with sidewalks in the city of Roanoke. And will connect the sidewalks that we built with the project in front of Tanglewood Mall altogether.
Okay.
So there'll be continuous bicycle lanes and pedestrian accommodations.
Okay. Great.
The next project is the Route 220 signalization improvements, which includes modifying for city and county signalized intersections with through-cut configurations to eliminate crossing Route 220 to allow more green time for all other movements. This project also includes pedestrian crosswalks and signals, and the project funding is $9.8 million from an Interstate 73 earmark that was re-appropriated to this project. So I have a number of exhibits to go through, and we'll start on the north end of the corridor. This is the intersection at Fleet Feet. Here on the northwest corner, we've got the vacant bank and the eye doctor here. This application is actually going to come through to you in April for a redevelopment, which they have proposed sidewalks along the frontage on both roadways to connect to the pedestrian signals that are proposed at this intersection with this project. We have Starbucks here, and then Home Depot on this side. So the through-cut will eliminate the movement straight across from Lowe's to Home Depot and Home Depot to Lowe's, but you can turn left and then take a right in either way to still get to your destination. What this does is, again, by taking out that signal phase for the straight-across movement, it real allocates that time to every other traffic phase, giving Route 220 more time to hopefully move traffic along the corridor. The next intersection, this is at Hunting Hills and the Coles intersection at Hunting Hills Plaza. This is the Taco Bell Pizza Hut on the corner, Honey Tree here, and then this is Hunting Hills on the other side. So this is the same configuration, the through-cut configuration with pedestrian accommodations as well. The next intersection is across the Blue Ridge Parkway in Clearbrook. This is the Willa Tree Development here. We also have Walmart on this corner and the Land Rover dealership, Burgland, on this corner. So this is a through-cut configuration from Buck Mountain to Stable. And then we also have pedestrian accommodations through the intersection here as well. And then this last exhibit is Clearbrook Village Lane and Indian Grave Road. We've got Clearbrook Elementary over here, got doctors' offices on both corners. This is an empty doctor's office here and Walmart on this corner. And this is, again, is a through-cut configuration with pedestrian accommodations, potential additional pedestrian accommodations here with a sidewalk. And this is the southern end of the corridor for the pieces of the project that we are working on. These are also Design Public Hearing Exhibits from 2021. So while the actual project plans are slightly different, this shows basically what's going to happen in a much more consumable format than the VDOT design plans. So the anticipated construction schedule for the combined project, which also does include pedestrian signal or signal improvements in Franklin County and Henry County, is May 2024 for advertisement. That'll be the combined diverging diamond interchange, the four signals in Roanoke County and Roanoke City, as well as the signals in Franklin County and the signals in Henry County. May advertisement with anticipated September award, then construction would start in October or November, and construction completion on the very long ends of summer of 2028. And that's, we don't know the exact date because there's no contractor in place. Once the contractor's in place and has a schedule set, we'll have a better idea of when the project will conclude. I have one more slide that talks to our draft Roanoke County 200 Plan transportation recommendations because we do try to build pedestrian accommodations wherever we can. So for the Cave Spring community planning area, we do have connecting crosswalks planned for the Route 220 intersections between Valley Avenue, Southern Hills Drive, and Crossbow Circle, Pheasant Ridge with pedestrian accommodations. So knowing that we had these crosswalk projects coming at these signals, we have a recommendation here that people voted on to potentially connect those with sidewalks at a future date. We also have evaluate potential pedestrian connections to businesses and destinations within the Cave Spring community planning area. And then we have identical recommendations for the Clearbrook community planning area on the south side of the Blue Ridge Parkway to connect crosswalks planned for the Route 220 intersections between Buck Mountain Stable and Clearbrook Village Lane and Indian Grave Road with pedestrian accommodations, and evaluate potential pedestrian connections to businesses and destinations within the Clearbrook community planning area. Then lastly, our countywide recommendation is to encourage sidewalk construction along public roads in conjunction with new and redevelopment activities in the urban and suburban area. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Would have any questions?
Yes, sir.
I have a couple. I know I'm jumping the gun because I think this board will have a land use matter before it in the next couple of months. But if you look at the plan for the corridor improvements at Valley Avenue and Southern Hills, that's by Lowe's, that's by the Lowe's on 220. We have a, I believe, an application that would look at maybe removing some proffered conditions from the bank property that's across the street from the Starbucks. And I know we're going to be looking at a TIA, a transportation improvement plan, as part of that land use change. Do you know or do we know, has that been coordinated with what VDOT is planning to do?
Absolutely.
And we hope that it'll all work.
So when we had the concept come in, I let the applicant know in the very beginning, this project has been underway for quite some time, connected the applicant with the project manager for the 220 signal project. So yes, the applicant did work on a transportation improvement or traffic impact analysis and does have a letter of concurrence from VDOT, which was submitted with the application package to the planning department. So yes, it has all worked out.
The, I don't know if the board's aware of, I think it's a potential that Sheets may be looking at that corner. And for me, unfortunately, I spend too much time at Lowe's, and if you come down Valley Drive, that intersection can be challenging, to say the least. And not to prejudge the Sheets, I like Sheets', I go to them all the time, but I could see some traffic impact conflicts on Valley Drive in that area. And I just wanted to make sure that they were going to be coordinating what they're planning to do with what VDOT is planning to do.
I think the other, what has also been planned as part of that redevelopment is the entrances have been moved away from the intersection as far as they can be. So on Valley Avenue especially, the entrance is pushed farther back than the existing bank entrance.
Okay. And then with respect to the corridor improvements at Buck Mountain Road, I don't know if the board would recall, a couple of months ago, we had a land use matter, somebody wanted to put a car wash in on that corner. And I think at that time, we saw, I think we saw these plans. And I think if these plans can go forward, that would truly help that intersection. Are there pedestrian improvements for that, for that intersection or sidewalks?
Yes. We had worked with the car wash to add sidewalks to that parcel to connect with the anticipated pedestrian connections as part of this project. They were in-site plan review, we were working out details, and then they decided that they were not going to pursue the project anymore, so they have, they have left.
That's my understanding.
But I was going to get sidewalks, and I was very excited, but, but I will say that there was public engagement as part of the 220 signal project, starting with a public information meeting in November 2019 held at Clearbrook Elementary. Then in September 2020, VDOT requested comments online about these concepts, and then there was a virtual public hearing held in April of 2021. So we started this work back in 2017 with the Art of Urban Preservation Program for Route 220, and there has been a good bit of engagement throughout this process. I think VDOT actually wanted to have these improvements built much sooner than now. So the process has been a little longer than they anticipated, but there has been a good bit of community engagement and outreach for this project. And we, of course, pushed VDOT's messaging every time.
I know we have our friends from VDOT here.
We do.
Are we anticipating, or is VDOT anticipating each of these projects to be a separate contract? Or are they looking at one big contract with one contractor to do all this work?
And so the diverging diamond interchange, there was, let me back up a smidge. So the signal project for Roanoke County and Roanoke City and Franklin and Henry was put out to advertisement in December. My understanding is they received one response to that bid, and it was high. So they needed to rebid the project. They decided to combine it with the diverging diamond interchange because that's a much larger and much more expensive project to do the whole project at one time. So yes, it will be one contract, but it may look like it's constructed in several different pieces, depending upon how the contractor wants to build it and has availability for that. Am I, am I correct, Mr. Blavins?
Yes.
Great.
And, Mr. Chairman, little, appreciate your patience. I see our chief of police in the back corner. Chief, could I ask you to come forward for a minute? This is somewhat tangential and unrelated to what Ms. Cronice is showing us. For many of you, you know, we had an unfortunate incident about a month ago. A young lady happened to be killed on Route 220, and I've had several phone calls and emails and personal interactions with some citizens who allege that that incident was directly related to the Suites for TLOT, the least of these, which was the old Apple Valley Motel. Chief, it's my understanding that the young woman who was unfortunately killed, she was a resident of Roanoke City on Walnut Avenue. Is that correct from your investigation?
Our investigation shows she was a city resident, but she was walking to an address in Rocky Mount, Virginia.
Wow. So far as your investigation shows, was she associated in any way with the Suites at TLOT?
She was not. She began walking in the 40300 block of Franklin Road, southbound, and the investigation shows she was struck while she was walking in the travel lane, southbound on Franklin Road.
How, my understanding was that was near the Blue Ridge Parkway entrance exit?
That's correct.
Were any of the drivers who were involved, were they in any way associated with Suites TLOT?
No, the driver was a professional driver who was driving to the Greensboro area.
You're, you're not a traffic engineer, but if any of these improvements that were shown at Buck Mountain and 220, if they had been in place at the time, would they have had any, would that have avoided this unfortunate incident?
Due to the time of the crash and the factors in play, I don't believe any safety protocols would have helped for this crash, simply because she was walking in the travel lane.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate your comments. Appreciate your patience, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Anyone else have a comment about this?
Have a couple.
Mr. Radford?
Follow-up. Megan, just staying on the Buck Mountain, so when I look at that intersection, I see a, it looks like a cross, the pedestrian crosswalk is going from the Springwood Properties over to the Land Rover. So if I was walking down the Parkway, and I need to get over to Springwood Properties, that intersection, how would I do that with pedestrian safety?
So you're walking from the Blue Ridge Parkway?
Parkway, yeah.
Along Route 220?
Heading toward Frank, or Rocky Mount. But I need to get to that other side of that cross intersection. How do I do that?
So what I, well, first, we need sidewalks along the edge of Route 220, ideally, and that's why we have the recommendation in the 200 Plan to connect these crosswalks together as best we can. In this instance, because we have crosswalks from one corner to another corner, excepting the other two, which don't have any accommodations, it would, it would not be easy. I would recommend walking around the corner here and then crossing on Buck Mountain to continue heading south. You could also jump the right turn lane and then cross this way. I mean, you could cross at the signal, but it's, it's a challenging area, and that's why we're trying to improve pedestrian accommodations where we can. We have had three pedestrian crashes in the last 10 years, including the one a couple weeks ago.
Okay.
And we've had some, we had two in the Clearbrook area before that, I believe it was 2013. So they're rare, but when there are crashes, they're typically fatal.
So I noticed at the Valley Avenue, there's a four-way connection, or three, yeah, there's four. So you got four. So we just didn't, didn't plan one for, for Buck Mountain. We went from four to two, and we just got two.
Well, I think each of these intersections is unique and complicated.
Good.
And the farther south you go, the more complicated they are. So, you know, I believe you reviewed these concepts with us way back when, it may have been 2019 or 2018.
Right.
And at that time, there weren't pedestrian accommodations, I know, included, I don't believe.
Right.
So what, what I did is, and my role is working on transportation, is I'm brought to VDOT's attention, we've had pedestrian fatalities in these areas before. We need pedestrian accommodations. And then- And then we started looking at how to accommodate pedestrians in these areas. And so then these designs were formulated. They look a little different from what we typically see with straight lines between corners because they're throughcut intersections. But we're gonna see that across the county in a variety of different places where we have these intersections proposed. But I was a bit at VDOT's mercy as well, as they're trying to integrate these accommodations into the designs that are proposed initially to move vehicles instead of people. So, yes, we ended up with two legs at that intersection. I don't know that there's really potential to make any changes. We've been through several rounds of public review. And actually, I've gotten comments from, from folks at community meetings that say, why are you putting pedestrian, why are you putting crosswalks here? Because there are people who need them. It's not a high volume, but there are people who walk this corridor all the time, and they, they do so at their own risk without any kind of accommodation. So we're adding what we can where we can. If you want to dive more into the why two legs and not four, I'm, I'm happy to invite Brian Blevins up to try to speak to that. But he's also not the project manager for this project.
Yeah, so we're also becoming more of a bicycle community, so we're seeing more bikes. So I was thinking not just walking, but just trying to go from the Buck Mountain side over to the Springwood on a bike. You could, I mean, you could do that and jump over the curb and all that, but it'd be nice to have a cut in there so you don't have to jump over the, the island. So stuff like that is what I'm, I'm thinking about. There's probably easy stuff that you can design at the time, so you don't have to do acrobatics to get your, your bike from this point to that point.
So Mr. Radford, your electric bike doesn't give you enough?
It does.
Get you over the curb?
Yeah, it does. I just have to pull it up to give it a little.
Little juice. I think what, what we're also seeing too with some of these islands is that the, the cross, or the pedestrian path is normally at grade, so it's flat, where you're not necessarily climbing a ramp to a higher elevation. So, and I, again, I would need to look at the plans to see exactly how these are designed. But if you think about the, the island at the Route 419 ramp on to, excuse me, 220 ramp onto 419, there at Firestone, that, that sidewalk within the island is, is flat. So there isn't any, any ramping up. So you could just get within that path in the island, I think, with your bicycle, and that would, would work without having to, to jump.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just add a really brief comment to this. I think for Mr. Radford's question, we have to look at all of these as initial steps because a few years back, we had no pedestrian accommodations of any kind on the 419 corridor. There's currently nothing on the 220 corridor. And I think as additional development and changes take place on the corridor, it's a lot easier to retrofit some of those side street pedestrian accommodations than it is to do the main move, which is crossing the, you know, the four-lane facility, or in this case, where you have turn lanes, they might be six lanes wide. So that, that's the, the heavy lift, and I think that these are, the additional features will be things we look at over the years, but it'll be easier to achieve.
And that's another point, I think, for these two projects, there's zero county dollars in these projects, and it's about a $27, $28 million investment in this corridor.
Anybody else?
Not so much a question, just a comment, that if, if all of these projects come to pass, it'll have, I think, a significant impact for safety and travel on 220, but also in a broader context. Help me, David, how far back did they go for I-73? Was it 20 years ago, they were talking about Interstate 73 to go from Roanoke down and intersect with I-73 in North Carolina? And I think many of these improvements are modifications or changes. I think the realization was that in Virginia, I-73 would probably not be built. And so these are sort of next best substitutes for, for that longer range transportation initiative that was, I think, 20 years ago, maybe longer. Can you remember? When, when were they talking about 73, 20, 25 years ago?
I believe it was 20, 25 years ago. I've been here almost 18, and I think the tail end of those conversations were happening kind of as I started. So I think it's, it's definitely a back burner project. And I think that's one of the reasons that this earmark that was designated for I-73 was reallocated to the Route 220 corridor to try to improve safety and traffic flow on a much smaller scale. So that's what these throughcuts do, is they improve capacity and, and safety with a fairly low cost. It's not a multiple billion dollar interstate.
Thank you. Ben?
I'm good.
You're good. Okay, a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
Before I forget. So you're gonna start this project in the fall. The days are probably the shortest, starting in about November, December. And this might be from Mr. Blevins back there. So how do you anticipate construction when it peaks up and ramps up on the 419-220 intersection? I'm not talking about 220 corridor improvements.
We've been talking.
Can you comment on that?
Do you want me to try first? You're welcome to come up.
Come on up so we can hear you.
So I think if you remember with the project in front of Tanglewood, we did not have lane closures during the day. The lane closures were outside of peak times where we were disrupting traffic as little as possible. And we talked about the same strategy here, is not closing lanes during the peak hours, that they'd be outside peak hours, so there'll be a lot of nighttime work, is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, the idea is to have as little impact as possible. It, it's, there's going to be impacts. I mean, that's, there's no doubt about it. The, the DDI project also includes modifications to the signals in front of Tanglewood. So similar to what you saw on the screen with the throughcuts on 220, there will also be throughcuts there. That was one of the ways to show the benefit for the project. And the, the signal at Wendy's there on 419 is what we call our pinch point, it's the least efficient. So there will be, there will be times where there's, there's gonna be some pain and, but the, the end result is gonna help move traffic a lot better.
It's gonna be a lot, a lot of gain after, after the pain, so. And we want to thank Dr. Smith, who helped us on this project, especially the 419-220, because that was looking slim and, and nil, if you will, when some life got restored with additional STBG funding. And I just want everyone at home to know that none of these funds came out of Roanoke County directly. It all came from the federal government and from the state of Virginia Department of Transportation and Commonwealth Transportation Board. And thank you, Mr. Blevins, for supporting this project. I hope you retire once all this is done, because this is gonna be a long four years. At least I hope you make it to retirement.
It may happen, it may happen.
Right. Thank you, Megan, for that update, appreciate it. Moving on to Item D under New Business, Resolution Approving Updates to the Bylaws of Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare. Chair recognizes Madeline Hanlon, Assistant to the County Administrator. Madeline?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm here today to talk about a resolution approving updates to the bylaws of the Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare. Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare is a community service board serving adults, children, and families with mental health disorders, developmental disabilities, or substance use disorders in the Roanoke Valley. The Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare serves residents of the cities of Roanoke and Salem, the counties of Bodatot, Craig, and Roanoke. Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare's bylaws were last amended in December of 2011. Over the last year, the Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare has proposed to revise their bylaws. An updated version was presented to the Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare Board of Directors in December of 2023 and was accepted. Sue Goad, our Director of Social Services, Carol Witt, a citizen representative, and myself serve on this board. In Article 14 of the Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare Board bylaws, it is stated that these bylaws shall be reviewed annually by the board and may be amended at a regular meeting of the board by two-thirds vote of these, of those present, and voting notice should have been submitted 15 days prior to the meeting. That has already occurred, that was in December of 2023. But subject to the approval of the governing bodies of the local political subdivisions is why I'm here today. Because Roanoke County is one of the local political subdivisions served by Blue Ridge, approval from the Roanoke County Board of Supervisors is required. So the proposed changes to the bylaws include clarification to the meanings of the term Operating Community Services Board, which can refer to both the collective members of the Community Service Board, which are appointed by the governing bodies of the local subdivisions, or the organization under the authority of the appointed board, which provides services through its own staff or through contracts. References to, and specific language of the Code of Virginia, revisions including mechanics of appointment, which have been removed from the bylaws and incorporated into a separate appointment policy, and also revisions to the attendance standards for board members. This establishes the expectation that board members must attend meetings, assigned committee meetings, and special meetings on a consistent basis. So with that being said, staff recommends approval of the attached resolution approving updates to the bylaws of Blue Ridge Behavioral Healthcare. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Go ahead.
Do you have a question?
No, I was gonna move the approval of the resolution that is in our agenda.
And I will second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on that motion? Will the clerk please call a roll? Thank you, Madeline.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Ms. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Ms. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Item E, Public Hearing. Item one, Public Hearing for Citizen Comments on the Real Estate Effective Tax Rate for Calendar Year 2024. Chair recognizes Steve Elliott, Budget Administrator from Finance and Management Services. Welcome, Steve.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This item is to conduct a public hearing for citizen comment on the effective tax rate for calendar year 2024. Per the Code of Virginia, Section 58.1-3321, when any annual reassessment in the county of Roanoke of real property would result in an increase of 1% or more of the total real property tax levies, excluding new construction, a calculation known as the Effective Tax Rate Increase is required to be completed. The county of Roanoke's real property assessments excluding new construction increased by 7.75% over the previous year. Therefore, state code, per state code, the county must calculate the effective tax increase, advertise, and conduct a public hearing for the effective tax rate increase. The advertisement was published in the Roanoke Times on February 11th, 2024. After conducting this public hearing, the Board of Supervisors, should it so choose, may like to keep the real estate taxes the same rate as prior year or make adjustments to the tax rate. Staff recommends conducting the public hearing to receive citizen comments on the real estate effective tax rate for calendar year 2024.
Okay, thank you, Steve. This time, we will open the public hearing. We appreciate all who have come to address the board today. When your name is called, please come forward and state your name and address prior to sharing your comments. Each person is permitted to speak up to three minutes. At the front of the podium is a light system that tells you how much time you have remaining. When the light changes from green to yellow, please share any concluding remarks. When the light changes from yellow to red, your time has ended. At this time, I only have one person signed up, do you have any more? Okay? Is anyone else that wants to speak on this matter today? If so, you need to fill out a form and get in line. Okay, thank you. Sherry Eckert, is that correct, Sherry? Welcome. Would you state your name for the record and your address? Thank you.
Sherry Eckert.
You can pull that mic down.
3801 Belme Drive, Roanoke, Virginia. And I just wanted to say that I'm a retiree, and my real estate assessments have increased by 35% if you count the proposed assessment for 2024. And there's only been a rate change of 3% in 2023. And I've talked to some of my representatives, and I understand that the state mandates that the tax, the assessment be near market value. But this is a real burden on citizens, and if you lowered your tax rate, it would give citizens some relief from the escalating prices of real estate. And that's what I would request. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. There being no one else, we will close the public hearing. Moving to Item F, Consent Agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda are considered by the board to be routine and will be enacted by one resolution in the form or forms listed below. If discussion is desired, that will, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Does any board member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I request that we remove and separately vote on Item One, which is approval of minutes for the board's January 4th, 8th, 9th, and 11th meetings. I did not participate in those meetings in my capacity as a supervisor, and I will need to abstain from voting on this item.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Shepherd, are there any objections from fellow board members? No objections. Is there a motion to approve Item One?
Motion to approve?
Is there a second?
Second.
Is any discussion on the motion? There being none, will the clerk please call the vote on Item One?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Abstain.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Is there a motion to adopt all of the remaining matters on the consent agenda?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Radford has a second. Is any discussion on the motion? Not, will the clerk please call a roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Moving on to Item G, Citizens' Comments and Communications. Are there any citizens wanting to address the board that have not submitted a form? Okay. We appreciate all who've come to address the board today. When your name is called, please come forward and state your name and address prior to sharing your comments. Each person is permitted to speak for up to three minutes at the front of the podium in a light system that tells you how much time you have remaining. When the light changes from green to yellow, please share any concluding remarks. When the light changes from yellow to red, your time has ended. Chair recognizes Helen B. Haynes. Would you please, welcome. Could you please state your name and address?
Ellen, E-L-E-N, Haynes, H-A-Y-N-E-S. And I don't want to waste you all's time, but there are 73 units in the development where I live, and it's managed by Signature Properties. And a lot of the people are in arms about them not doing what they're hired to do. They've, since Anglin was the management company for, they were at the bottom of the barrel, so I was told, but Signature's gotten them beat 100 to 1. I've been there since 1986, and I had three children living with me at the time, and I needed the room for the townhouse. Like I said, there are 73 units, several of them are rentals, and they have their dues taken out with their rent. I can't afford to move, and we're being assessed astronomical amounts of money, and I don't have it. There's $2,000 each unit that was supposed to be paid from August 14th, when they notified us, up until January the 1st, is 24, was supposed to be paid. I don't have that kind of money in my savings or anywhere else. I'm retired, like some other folks, and they have not held up their end of the bargain as far as taking care of the property. I've been told I needed to paint my own door, we need to pick up our own limbs that have fallen off the trees, they didn't put any mulch down, the pool was closed since before COVID. I could go on and on and on. And I didn't know that the meeting was today until I called, because some others would have been here with me, because an attorney has been gotten by three of them that I know of, but so far, we haven't had any, you know, thing decided. They have charged me a $50 late fee every time. I didn't stop paying until Anglin either sold it or let Signature take over. But they were taking care of the facades on Morning Dove. There's two streets in this development, Tree Swallows where I live and Morning Dove, where the other, they have garages, we do not, and they assessed us for the facades. I've got an issue with my front door, that it's a gap this big, that the bricks. I had an engineer come out and look at it and say, they are responsible for the outside, and my walls are cracked and inside of my foyer. I don't want to take up any more of your time, but I don't know what to do. They're not doing what they are being paid to do, and I'm being charged $50 every time I don't pay them.
Thank you.
And right now, it's up to $20,000 from when I stopped. It's right at $20,000 because of the $50 late fees. Stonehenge didn't charge but 10, so.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted somebody to do something.
Which district is that? Yours?
I don't have a clue.
Thank you.
What is the address? Keespring.
Is that address yours? We're looking to see whose district that is and.
The, Tree Swallow and Morning Dove. It's Pin Forest. I, I believe it's probably the development at the top of the hill.
Yeah.
We'll, I'll get with Mr. Lubek, and we'll get back with our citizens.
Thank you. Item H, Reports. Is there a motion to receive and file reports that have been included in the agenda under Item H?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All of the discussion, any discussion on the motion? Being none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. Reports and inquiries of board members. Mr. Mahoney?
I'll pass.
Thank you. Mr. Radford?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Uh, I noticed in the consent agenda, we moved a voting precinct, and I see two of the, two of the members here, Board of Elections.
Three.
Three? I'm sorry. Three more?
Anna.
Register.
Thank you.
Anna's here.
Four of you here. And, and thank y'all for making that, that change, uh, in, in our district. And we look forward to using that Christ of King location in, in future, uh, future locations, future votings when that occurs, elections. Thank you. Uh, one other item. Uh, I've been working on, uh, a county fair project that I'd like to see Roanoke County get involved with, and I've mentioned it to you guys in the past. And I've kind of convinced Bent, the Bent Mountain community to be the anchor, to start that off. And so, they've been meeting with Alan Hayes and our Parks and Rec Department. Uh, it, it's a, it's a big event, uh, but you have to start off small. But they need some seed money. And I know we're sitting on, uh, uh, some, uh, funds, our own discretionary funds, $50,000, but I would like to take $10,000 of that and put it towards seed money for Alan, his department, to use to try to take this, uh, this concept a little further. They have been meeting monthly. Uh, they need to meet sooner. Uh, I'm, I'm going to get, uh, I'm going to meet Alan and one of assistants up, up at Bent Mountain, hopefully next week. But we need some funds. This affects our economic development, our, it can be an economic development driver, uh, Parks and Rec driver, and also the, for our community, Roanoke County as a whole. So, I kind of want to throw that out to our group, uh, to use some of those funds. Uh, you know, I've been on the board for six, seven years, and I haven't seen any of those funds be used for anything. This might be a good use of it, because it has economic development written all over it, and I think that would be a good use for it.
We used them once.
We have.
For other things.
Okay.
Public safety.
Anyhow, uh, Mr. Lubek, your guidance is needed in this matter. Do we need to bring us back to the next meeting? Or can we go ahead and, uh, nod our heads in agreement on this now?
And sir, I'd recommend that we bring it back before the board, the next meeting, and the budget staff get provided.
Well, now, I'll let you and Mr. Radford figure out what the fact amount should be.
Okay.
We'll go from there. But I think we'll be able to support something.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Shepherd?
Well, I'm going to take a few minutes, y'all, so I'm warning you. I have been busy the last couple of weeks. I have three minutes. Well, first, I want to say that I was fortunate enough with Megan Baker to visit Billy Bird Apartments. And we got to tour all of those, which is the former Williamburg High School, then it went to Williamburg Junior High, then it went to the RCCC, and now they've redone it. We were able to tour down in what they called the old shop building. And I actually went to school there and really enjoyed that, and, and thankful for Doug getting that arranged. And one thing I'd like to mention is, we did have a teacher that the shop building was his lair. And his name was Mr. Stacy, and I have been reading this week that he passed away this week. So, I just wanted to take a second to mention him and the appreciation that we had for him and that unit. Um, also, I visited the courts, um, was able to look around those with Mike Gallagher, and I want to thank him. I visited and toured the Roanoke County Jail. Kevin Orange arranged that. Jaclyn Persiani gave me the tour. She was great. And Brent Hudson also. I want to thank all three of them for being able to get around and see all of those. Um, I also visited RV TV and met with Scott Ramsberg and getting myself familiar with all of that. And of course, the McAfee, McAfee Nob Shuttle Bus, as well as the Carson Road Project. So, I've had a busy two weeks, but I'm thankful to be able to do all this and look forward to seeing all of these things come to fruition.
Thank you very much. Good report. Ms. Hooker?
So, Ms. Shepherd, you have been busy, and I'm, I'm glad that you were participating in all those things. It's good. It's fun. I just have a couple of things, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first one is, um, another state champion from the Katava District, Northside High School Boys Basketball. Back-to-back years of being state champions, and we are just incredibly proud of them and what they have done and how they were able to hang on to that title. So, I'll really look forward to making arrangements, to congratulating them, uh, here at a board meeting. And, uh, I would just like to, uh, say to Mr. Radford too, that I'll look forward to hearing more about that proposal for Bent Mountain and, uh, what we can do to be helpful. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And last but not least, I just want to extend my congratulations to Northside as well. Most of the students come probably from the Hollins District, because it's right on the line there almost. So, uh, but let's, let's, uh, give our school colleagues across town first dibs on congratulatory celebrations before we.
We'll see how long they take. We might be.
Well, they might have done it already. You never know. Anyhow, um, we are going to have a meeting next Monday, March 18th. I encourage anyone in the Hollins District, uh, to come out to Peters Creek Williamson Road Multimodal Safety Improvements from 5:00 to 7:00 at the Hollins Library next Monday, March 18th. You'll hear and see about all the ideas VDOT presents for us to study, consider, and vote on so that we can prioritize future projects for improvements along the Williamson Road and Plantation Road areas. So, that's next Monday, the 18th. With that said, we will, uh, go into our work sessions in a moment. Uh, momentarily, the board will recess to the third floor for the work session. However, before doing so, I'd like to move that the board go into closed session upon the completion of the work session. And, uh, I move to go into closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, Subparagraph A, 3 of the Code of Virginia, to discuss the consideration of the acquisition of real property in the Cave Spring Magisterial District for a public purpose, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body. And, Section 2.2-3711, Subparagraph A, number five of the Code of Virginia, for discussion concerning a prospective business or industry, or the expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community. Specifically, the board will discuss potential business location or expansions in Cave Spring or Katava Districts. Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mrs. Shepherd?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes. We will now recess to the third floor for the work session and follow the closed session. Thank you.